Second by Member DeZoglio. And we need a roll call vote, please, Martha.
Ryan DeZoglio?
Yes.
Mary Beth Donovan?
Yes.
Lori Keegan?
Yes.
Kristin Maxwell? Kristin Maxwell? Daniel Chabilla?
Yes.
Kenneth Wollett?
Yes.
Mayne Neil Perry? All right. Superintendent, would you please start the discussion of your goals?
Yes, thank you. So you have two things tonight. You have in the packet is the report, myself assessment on my end-of-year goals, but you also have a separate packet that was given to you three-hole punched with some additional evidence of the six goals to put in the binder that you received in January. So when we met in January, I did a mid-year update on my goals. And last year, we tried this, and it was a much better process to have a mid-year goal. So people were not looking at binders full of things, you know, in a short period of time to actually fill out the evaluation for me before August. So I'm not going to go through page by page. What you have in front of you are the six goals that the committee and I agreed upon in August of last summer. So, you know, recognizing when we talked in January, this could also be somewhat challenging because there are four new members on the committee who weren't there for that discussion in August. But hopefully, there's enough information in your binder, and you'll have opportunities through the summer when the evaluation subcommittee meets to ask questions if there are further clarifying questions that I can provide through the process. So the piece in your packet that you have is, again, my final reflections and goal outcome. And basically, all I tried to do here was just highlight when the evaluation comes, there will be two sections. There's a section on goals, and there's a section on the standards. And the section on the goals is really what this pertains to, and the language I tried to keep the same. So, for example, in goal number one, I highlighted what my self-assessment was. You guys might find a different assessment when you look through my evidence. But the goal outcome for one is that overall, I think there was significant progress made. We made some incredible gains in our reading, which Dr. Golovski went through last night. You know, we met the goal of 65% in many of the grade levels, but not all of the grade levels. And so, you know, unfair to say that we met that goal of 65% across the board. We were focused on grades three through five, at least that was my goal. And there was a purpose and a reason behind that. Those were our COVID, the COVID cohort of kids that were a little more behind than the rest of the grade spans. And so, we knew as a school district, we needed to focus on those kids. So that's why that was part of my goal specifically. And again, I think they made some incredible gains. This is still a group of kids we're going to be following through. The grade-three students weren't in kindergarten during the COVID year, right? So that gives us some perspective. The grade-four kids were in grade one. You know, so those are some pretty significant foundational skills that we are, where state, everybody's concerned about that. So I think we're making gains to catch those kids up. And the focuses that we've had with the tutoring, our summer academies, you know, all those things are impacting what we're doing. So that was goal number one. And all I did was add in the packet that was clipped, that is three-hole punched for you, I labeled it the same way that we, you know, goal one I, goal one J. The description of what that is is here on this packet. And then you have a piece of evidence to look at. Okay? Goal number two was our goal about our English learners. This was the first year that we had our English learner supervisors and a real focus on data and accountability for our English learner students and staff. So at the bottom there, I have a goal outcome. I feel very strongly about this one. We absolutely exceeded the goal that was set for the work that was being done, thanks to Dr. Golovski and the team of five English learner supervisors. It was pretty amazing, the work that was able to be done. We were able to, during the access testing time, once we got those scores, we were able to celebrate the students who scored out of ESL, share that with their families. I think there was just a lot, a lot of really positive focus on their learning experiences and becoming proficient in English. The team really dove into this work in creating assessment calendars, making sure that our kids, you know, while they're in the mainstream classrooms, have the support they need. It is, it sets such a foundation for the work ahead of us. And again, the work, I am in awe of the work that the five supervisors and Dr. Golovski did in one year's time. And again, this is all new to us. So it's very exciting to see where this is going to, you know, go in the future. And the work that is, again, very much ahead of us, but really important work for our English learners. I think the one thing that I know I enjoyed very much is the conversations I had with various administrators about the fact that these folks, you know, one of our big goals was not just to focus on our English learner staff and students, but to focus on the all-classroom teachers because all of our English learners are in every class, right? They don't, they come out for specialized instruction or are supported in the classroom for that specialized instruction for English learning. But they're in every single class that we have. And so, that's a, that's a little bit of a broader lens that we're focused on even making more a part of our professional development plans for all of our departments. So that's another exciting piece to this particular goal. So there's some additional evidence in that goal as well for you. Goal number three. So this one doesn't have the evidence, which I did explain in January. This is not something that I would put out for public consumption. I have the binders in my office. This is something I'd be happy to share and show all of you, you know, in the confines of that setting. But we did work throughout the school year to actually revise and update. That was a big goal of ours, of mine, to update our emergency procedure manuals, to make them, you know, in line with what the state, what the federal, what the police chief, the fire chief, we met multiple times over the school year with those particular folks to talk about the emergency plans. We'll be able to meet with them over the summer, make sure they have copies of all of those. They're pretty comprehensive, much more comprehensive than our past emergency manuals. So we feel really positive about that work. And we did do all of our, the SRO sergeant was great this year with the police department. We did all of our emergency drills in every school, which, you know, we, after COVID, it was a little spotty. So we were happy about that, that we got our lockdown and Alice drills in. We had all of our fire drills and evacuations. That was something, too, that we were hoping for. The one thing we weren't able to accomplish this year, which I think the chief and I, we have our sights set on it, as does the mayor. We still want to plan for the large-scale, you know, lockdown or Alice drill response, so that we can see our real-time response, and the police can actually do a real-life drill and see what their response time would be and how we would handle that situation as a community. We did that years ago, and we would take turns in schools doing that. And I think we need to get back to that again. And again, just this, we weren't able to get that date organized this spring with other things happening. So I'm hoping that that's something we can really execute and plan even the summer to execute in the fall. So we're working through that. The next goal, goal number four, so family engagement. So this one has taken a few windy turns over the past couple of years. But I think one of the things that I included in your evidence for evidence is a comprehensive list. I started out giving you guys one in January of different events. The one that you have currently that is updated is from all five of the schools with all the different events that families were invited to. So again, we're making, we're making significant progress in this area of bringing parents and having events in the schools that parents can celebrate with us. The principals are working to figure out what those moments and times are that make the most sense, I have to say. We tried some new things even at the high school this year. We did the juniors' honor awards. We separated it from the senior award night, and it was phenomenal. It was actually in the morning. It was just for juniors. All of the parents of the kids participating were able to attend. It was a nice, perfectly designed event. And again, they had their own moment, separate from the senior awards night. And I think that was a new tradition that we set this year because it was really something we weren't sure how it was going to go. And it went really well. So I think we're really focused on those conversations about, you know, sharing those opportunities with parents. And we're hearing that loud and clear from you all and the PTO meetings, same thing, you know, they love coming in and sharing those opportunities with their students, being a part of the school environment. So we're doing that as much as we can, and we're going to continue to do those things starting in the fall, a little bit sooner. There's some other examples in there, too, but I wanted to focus on that one. So goal number five is the one that aligns to objective two, which is the mental health initiative. So in this one, the goal outcome is interesting. And so what I have for the goal outcome, there's a chart on the back of this one. So we, what you didn't see in the report out last night, and the report out, I think, in quarter three, we had the baseline from the beginning of the year, but I wanted to show you what the beginning of our plan was. And so last year, we were able to make our metric in year two in this goal. You know, Mr. Cracker explained that we thought we were going to get to let a decrease in the severe categories quicker. And in year one, we realized after the pandemic, that wasn't going to happen. It was going to take a while and then kind of take a nosedive and then level off. And so we saw the decrease, the largest decrease was in year two of our work. That was a year after coming back from the pandemic. So year three, while we saw the decreases, we didn't meet that 12% target. Last year, it was a 14, I think, or 15% target. But we didn't meet that 12% target. We met it in a couple of areas which are highlighted there. But I think one of the other things that Mr. Cracker wasn't able to, or didn't report on last night because we had the numbers in quarter three, was we are, one of our goals, too, in this work, was to actually get us back to a place where we were seeing pre-pandemic numbers. And although those were not good, we are back to that. And so I think that is someplace as well, that, you know, they were so high coming out of the pandemic, that we're making some progress. And now we're back to those pre-pandemic levels, and now we have to readjust, right? So this is the next cycle of, okay, where are we now? What are those categories? And some of those categories are shifting, where the severe categories are lying, whether it's anxiety, depression, trauma, suicidal tendencies. We're seeing some of those areas shift a little bit from what we had seen pre-pandemic, if that makes sense. So that will be some of the work ahead of us. So again, there, you know, we met some in a couple of those categories. I'm trying to be, I'm trying to quantify some of this as well. You know, the work was pretty amazing that we're able to do and stick to what the plan is for the professional development we're providing, the work that we're doing, the partnerships that we have, you know, and all a testament to John Cracker's networking and work to be able to bring these, these folks in, you know, have CARESOL as be a support system for us and keep this, keep us going in a, in a positive direction with this work. All right. And then the last goal is the weird one. And I say that with all, because I wrote it. But so goal number six, we have, I think, we started talking about this last year, for those of you who were with us, is that this goal had the best intentions when we wrote the goal in the strategy plan and quickly realized that this goal really isn't a standalone objective for the district, that it really, looking at the different data, looking at curriculum, looking at everything with an equity lens, is our work, right? So we will, you will not see a goal like this, a standalone goal about equity in the next strategy plan. It will be woven into whatever goals that we're presenting, right? Looking at the data, looking at the subgroups, looking at inclusive practices. All of those things have to be built into everything that we're doing, not something separate. So I did my best here to provide you with some of the things that we certainly were able to accomplish. I think the most important one, and Dr. Golovski did have a slide on this last night. I know it was the very end of the long meeting, but I don't want to gloss over it too quickly. But one of the things that we have focused on since February, January or February, is the, is the grading with equity work with all of our administrators. We spent time, we do a quarterly leadership meeting. So every two months, we do a hour and a half session with half of our administrators, and then the second half comes. So we're not depleting buildings of all the administrators at once. And we try to focus on some professional development for our administrative teams. And grading is the, we committed to it, and we focused on grading for the last three meetings of the school year. And it was an amazing, amazing, we saw some amazing progress, had some great conversations, recognizing that grading is something that we need to talk about and, and try to realign. You know, the language in the handbook, if you guys have looked at it, is really needs revising. So that's why that was part of this, where it says, you know, in grade one, you'll have 10 minutes of homework, grade two, you'll have 20, grade three, you'll have 30, grade six, you'll have 60. That is archaic, right? That's just, we need to update that. And so we spent some time thinking about where are we able to align our work? Because some of the things we do, our best practices, and bring everybody else in line to that, because some of this is already happening, right? So there's some low-hanging fruit here that we thought was really important to acknowledge, that could be easily implemented, easily communicated, right? Because some things are already happening a certain way and just haven't been communicated properly to teachers, to parents, in handbooks, right? And so we have a working draft. It needs a little more work before we present it for handbook purposes to all of you. But also keeping in mind, this is a really important topic to, to parents, right? And grades and report cards are for parents. And so this is not something, you know, we have lived through, I have lived through this multiple times in this district of changing reporting styles, changing report cards, going from the tri-fold copy, carbon copies, to non-carbon copies, to standards-based report cards, to infiniti, like, all of that can be very, you have to have a good plan. And so we recognize that, and we're not going to bite off more than we can chew. And we're going to have to take pieces of this slowly. But we're really looking at that with an equity lens as well. You know, what does it mean? And what are our beliefs versus what is best for children? And what do, what do higher education institutes want? We have to keep that in mind. What do private high schools want? We're looking at all of those things. So while this is the less, least meaty goal for me, I think there was some really important work that came out of it because we decided to just absolutely focus on it with our administrators. That goal will still be a part of our work and be, you know, again, woven into some of the, the other pieces of, of the work that we're going to be doing. So we provided you with a little bit of that for this goal as well. So there, I'm saying, we made some progress, right? Because we were able to focus on a few of those items, make some progress. We'll be presenting some of those changes and revisions to you guys in August as well with the handbook. That's like the overview.
Does anyone have any questions? Member Chabilla?
So I haven't been able to go back to where we started in August. But looking at this, my two points. I come from a world where you see these big changes in scoring, be it with reading or anything, that it's, it's an alarming jump because the range is so broad. I look at the reading scores and stuff like that, and it's great that we're, we're producing them. I just need to understand how much of that is actual knowledge being consumed into these kids? Or is it because we changed programs? Or is it, like, I see a big jump from 30 to 60, and it makes me nervous. Just because if I were sitting at my desk at work right now and I saw that big swing, there'd be alarms going off somewhere in the building because something bad happened. So it's just, it's a perspective thing that I need to, some help wrapping my mind around. The other element is the bringing people into the building one, which is a big one for me, as you well know. I just want to make sure, and I assume that this will be a goal next year in a little bit of a different fashion, that we're not putting too much emphasis in reliance on our PTOs. I mean, they serve a very distinct and separate function. I don't want, not very distinct and separate, but distinct and separate nonetheless.
Absolutely.
And I want to make sure that we're watching, to make sure that we're bringing in, giving an opportunity to all parents and not just the, what was it, the National Honor Society, EL parents, and just broadening that up. That's my only two comments and feedback.
I, I can certainly, I appreciate the comment about the data, because we're really excited about it. So we're looking at it from a different lens.
And we should be.
You know, and I can certainly ask Dr. Golovski just to speak about that a little bit, on what we think it is from, because it is different than in the years past. And we're recognizing that. And I think that was part of what we were trying to say last night. Like, we recognize that the assessments we're using this year, the fact that we're in year three as well of implementing curriculum with fidelity, also plays a huge role in that, where we're getting to a point where, you know, we implemented reading success blocks three years ago because it was absolutely out of necessity. And now, we're looking at the reading success blocks and saying, hey, teachers, we might not have groups of kids that are so far apart that we need to put them in six separate groups. That's what we wanted, right? We want to get to a point where we have in certain grade levels. We don't need a reading success block because all the kids are so, have so many vastly different and faraway needs. So we're starting to see some of that. So some of that is definitely because of the work our humanities supervisors, our principals are doing to make sure that the, the courses are happening the way they're supposed to be, the instructions happening, our work with, I think, all of it. It's hard to say, like, one thing in education is it. But in year three, this is exactly, we want to be where we are right now, and then some, obviously, because we want to keep going.
Always.
Right? But the work that we've done with TNTP as well, this is year three of actually opening up our eyes a little bit on calibrating what we should be looking at for instruction in reading and literacy, has been phenomenal. And I've been a part of that for the three years. So I've seen our teachers grow. I've seen our administrators grow in the walkthrough opportunities. I mean, we can walk in now, and I know exactly what I'm, I know what I'm looking at. Do I know what you're looking at? Right? We all kind of know now, like, oh, wait a minute, this might be happening for a little too long, right? The opening went a little too long. And even at this point, and I say even because it's not, you know, this isn't my area of expertise, but I can walk into pretty much any classroom at this point and know the units and wonders, the books they're reading in the L curriculum, what kinds of work they should be doing, the conversations they're having. It's phenomenal to see that. So it's exciting. I think all of those things together add up. But I do think, and I'll let Dr. Golovski answer that part, about the testing. I think the assessment we're using is a far better indicator than the Lexia was about kids actually reading at or above grade level. It's actually giving us, here's a passage, they, they have vetted that this is on grade five, right? This is a national assessment, that they have vetted this is grade five material, and, and kids are meeting it. And Lexia worked a little differently, right? Lexia was saying, if they score this, the likelihood they're going to be at grade level is this percent. So the way, and I think I said that right, so the, the way that it was normed was just a little bit different. And I, and again, I think we're recognizing that this is reading plus, the insight assessment. And DIBELS is a little different because it's, it's different categories for the younger kids. But the actual reading comprehension piece of it, it's vocabulary, it's the passage, it's the, it's the language, it's the questions that are being asked. Is that on grade five? And kids, the kids do it. And if they can do it, they're reading at a grade five level. It's kind of matter of fact. I think that's part of what we're seeing. And as they are going through their school year, they're, they're able to, to gain that experience because they are in, this is the other piece of TNTP for us, that was so critical that we just, we didn't have consistently in the district prior to this, is that kids need to be an attext. a text, whether it's an article, a book, a novel. They need to be talking about it, they need to be reading it, they need to be sharing ideas with each other about it. And that was one of the things that, when you saw the TNTP slides last night, you know, quality text, that's the first thing they look at. That was the first thing we worked on with TNTP is making sure, right, kids were in it, not being talked to about it, but that kids were actually shared reading, they were reading to each other, they were looking in the text for evidence, right? They were interacting with that text. So that was a really high point, too.
So I guess.
I can let Dr. Golovski answer more if that helps.
Yeah, no, it's helpful, it's absolutely helpful. I guess I am looking to understand, so I know we're not the only district that had reading issues.
Oh, yeah.
Post-COVID.
Or pre-COVID.
Or pre-COVID, right. We're not alone, we're not unique. Is it a, is it a normal swing that we're seeing? Like, I know that you belong to your superintendent groups and you guys all talk about this stuff around the water cooler. Like, is it, are those swings normal? Like, are you, are you seeing, are we doing, are you seeing that your peers are having the same result if they're doing similar programs?
So I haven't been specific in having that conversation with my peers around the water cooler. I think having kids reading at a, I mean, obviously, all of us want our kids reading at grade level by the end of each academic year. I don't think I can answer that about the.
And that's, that's fair.
The different part.
I just, I don't have perspective because I don't live in your world.
Yeah.
About how much of a improvement is to be expected over a year of curriculum or two years of curriculum.
Right.
I don't know. So I know that, again, in my world, a big swing would be a scary thing. Not necessarily bad, but scary until we understood it. And I don't know how to view it in this, other than it's great, we want our kids to read without a doubt. I just, I don't, I don't know how to view that swing because it's inherently driven into me that it's scary, so.
I can speak to your last question a little bit. I attended the GLEAM convening of Cohort One, Two, and Three districts just recently at Devon's. And we were presenting on behalf of the district on our progress monitoring and our processes. And the district who presented before us, similar in size and composition, they were allotted for their progression and growth in screener scores. And I took a look at the handout and they were, they were knocking on 60%, 61, 62. So I was proud to see that we were in that range and a little bit higher.
That's helpful.
Yeah, yeah. And I would say too, at the onset of the strategic plan, it was established as a direction because it was recognized as an issue that we needed to address. And there's been a whole lot of attention and growth and effort devoted to that. And so I want to give praise to the teachers and administrators who really supported that and committed to the goal. And I will say that whenever people from the outside world visit the district, whether that be another district or a consulting group, one of the comments we always hear is that our kids are ready and are ready to learn and are really respectful and respondent to what we present them. And so with the curriculum that you mentioned, holding students to high expectations, help those that are ready to zoom ahead, go for it. And then we worked on the supports as well. We also worked really hard to make sure that kids had access to texts and supports, both in and out of school. So whether that's reading plus, Newzella, open eBooks, at their fingertips, they had access to what they needed, which I think helped, as well as the targeted PD time and the common planning time that was directed. So I think, and those were consistencies. It wasn't one of those situations where the teachers arrive and say, well, so what's the focus for this year? It was loud and clear that literacy was where we needed to grow. So from the convening, I can say that we're in the ballpark of Cohort One districts, of which we are.
Very helpful, thank you. Just to let you know, she's got her hand up up there.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So I just wanted to point out a few things. I think that if, you know, we're making such improvements with the literacy, like 25 to 30% from the beginning of the year to the end of the year, I think that's great. I do, I would love to support that and keep moving forward with that. I would love to see what the end of next year is like, if that's what our students are capable of, a 30% increase. But another thing I wanted to point out, too, is last night while we were talking about it, I brought up the fact that, you know, sometimes there is double testing. It was said that, you know, you do choose the higher score of the two tests that they take. So I just want to highlight that and remember that that was actually something that was said. And then I wanted to touch on the events because I see a lot of them. And I actually talked with you, Dr. Quang, a lot about parents and being welcomed into the buildings. And I think you've done a great job, especially with the new events and all of that. So I appreciate that. But I do want to say that a lot of the events are PTO posted. And sometimes PTOs aren't supported. They're actually made to feel like they very much need to stay in their lane. And which is fine, but it's treated as a separate entity. So I don't want this to kind of pull the wool over people's eyes because although we're doing it for the students, it's not always welcomed. So maybe we can all get on the same page with that again. And as far as the grading, is changing the grading system in that topic, too? Or is it just like the wording of the handbook? Like, would grade five be graded, like letter grades, A, you know, A, B, C, D? Or like, I'm just curious as to if there's any like additions to what we do now.
No, so.
Thank you.
Yep, so, so two things. I just want to say that I do continue to meet, and I meet with the PTO officers twice a year. And so I do, I had, I did have a leave of absence this year for my own medical reasons, so it threw the dates off a little bit. But I did meet with the PTO in August or September and then again in April. So I do definitely keep the line of communication open with the PTO officers in the schools. And again, they're, they're a fantastic group of people and they share, I don't really even talk during those meetings very much. They just share ideas with each other about where they are. That's how I think we got to the, the, I don't know, the fundraiser that they all do now with the racing and the color.
Fun Run.
The Fun Run stuff was through those meetings and sharing some of those ideas and how much money that can raise. So those meetings are good. I absolutely am going to continue those meetings as well to make sure we're on the same page. I think, you know, a lot of my conversations, and you're right, Kristin, you came up with some great ideas, too, that we were able to make happen this year. You know, just some, some easy opportunities to invite parents into the building for Academic Bowl or the National Honor Society, as, you know, assemblies. You know, I think one day I was at the timony and it was, we were celebrating the L's testing out of ESL needs. And so I was with groups of families in the auditorium. And then I came out and streamlined, walked up to grade four, I believe it was grade four, who were doing multicultural presentations for their families. So that was really another exciting, at the same time, the PTO was having a Scholastic Book Fair. It was, it was, again, the energy was positive. There were a ton of people in the building for different reasons, some for the same, some were going, streamlining up to the next thing. But I think, again, we're really open, the principals, and I have had lots of conversations about that, you know, just when the opportunity arises, let's just do it, right? We don't, we don't need to overthink it, we don't need to create something necessarily new. And we know that parents don't particularly like coming out at night if their children aren't involved. Like, we've learned some things over our tenure, right? So how do we capitalize on that? I think we're gonna, you'll see more of it and continue to do it. But the grading thing, so no, Member Maxwell, we're not talking about changing the grading system. So K6 will still be standards-based, 712 will be letter grades. It's really just about the expectations, the norms of grading. Like, how much does homework count? What does classwork look like? What is participation? What are expectations of students at certain grade levels and content areas? It really, it's almost going back to that basic, like, what do we need to expect? Because we've, the handbook language, I think, has probably been in there since I started 22 years ago. But we have changed our grading schema, right? The standards-based versus the letter grades. Definitely in the time that I've been here. But we really haven't changed, what is that, what should parents, what do kids need to expect from classes and how consistent can we be? So it's more on that regard, Member Maxwell, than it is on like, we're not going to be changing the grading schema. And that's a, that's a huge undertaking. We're going to start small first and just kind of revise what we have and talk about our practices and try to communicate those best practices out so everybody feels that they know what the expectations are, how do we get there, and so forth. Does that answer your question? I can't see you, Member Maxwell, so I can, I see a big glare when I look at the TV, so hopefully that helps.
Thank you.
Member Donovan.
Okay, I have five, it's kind of a schizophrenic combination of questions, okay?
All of them.
Okay, so first of all, can you hear me?
No.
Can you hear me now?
You gotta get close.
Now bad, right? Okay, okay. So the Talking Points, which obviously has been a huge sea change, right? That, I know many teachers made that their professional practice goal last year or this year? I don't know, I've lost track of time. Is the assumption now every teacher uses Talking Points?
Yes.
And that's part of the evaluation piece, is it?
Yes, so we actually can see the whole platform. So, meaning Lisa and I can see the whole district use of Talking Points. And so when we do that, we actually will share that out with principals, department heads, things like that, of who might be using it so much and who maybe isn't using it as much. And we want to get people on that. So we are definitely talking about that and sharing that as we close this year.
Yeah, because obviously it's.
It's an amazing tool. We're trying to figure out a little bit even, there's a couple of other opportunities with Talking Points that we're looking into that could be a complete game changer for us. Meaning, there's an, there's an opportunity that it could actually translate documents into the home language. She's still nodding, I just want to make sure she's still nodding her head. And so we're very interested in that because right now, Infinite Campus can't do that for us, right? Like, we can email things, but we have to translate the documents, attach them accordingly. And right now, we are, we have the capacity to do English and Spanish, those, that's our highest incident language. But we have a lot of families who speak other languages. And so we know that level of communication isn't reaching everybody when we just do an email and it's English-Spanish. So if indeed this Talking Points, which is new, and we're going to investigate this year to see about this, if it actually can translate the documents, we would potentially be using Talking Points for almost every communication instead of the emails with attachments. Because the documents would be attached, like, in the Talk, like, we have teachers now who love doing that. They just send the email out, the Talking Point text to their class and they'll attach a PDF of whatever it is, right? Activities for the week or whatever the communication is they want the whole group to know. So just imagine that going to the parents, the text that the teacher types is in their home language and then it actually translates the attachment in their home language. That's a game changer.
Is that something you'd be able to use for special ed documents? Because I know that's a pain.
I don't know. The new features, it looks like they're trying to combine text messaging, app use, and an email feature as well. So it could be delivered to inboxes in a more formal way. I think we're trying to figure out when is it appropriate to deliver certain piece of information quickly to a parent? Because we are finding that parents are very prone to respond quickly. But then the teacher finds that now they need to respond again. And so in order to keep up and be responsive to parents, sometimes if it's a lengthier conversation, a phone call, or an email is warranted now, but with the new features, that's really exciting, all at an up charge. But the video feature as well, so Dr. Quang's video messages would be translated.
Member Donovan, just one comment. For the special ed stuff going into the app, my concern would be to make sure the app.
Privacy.
HIPAA compliant?
Yeah.
Because.
I don't think we would be sending, we wouldn't be sending like IEPs that way. That wouldn't be the formal way we would do that. Yeah. Because if it did end up in the wrong phone number or the hands, I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily want, because that happens, right? One number transposed and somebody from Infinite Campus is saying, why am I getting these Talking, these messages?
And there were, are all the parents now in? You feel confident that the parents?
I don't think they're all in. I think we have more parents interacting with Talking Points than with their email.
Okay, yeah.
Hundred percent. That I can, I think I can say with real good confidence. The teachers, just the teachers' feedback alone. Yeah, and I think the important part for us is, you know, if parents know that the weekly message or that comes via email on my own time, but the message that I want to communicate with the teachers are coming daily or weekly through Talking Points, that's important for us, too. They know sort of what avenue that's going to be. But I would love to just be able to use Talking Points for any messages going out. Because again, the likelihood that somebody's actually going to get it and look at it is much higher with Talking Points. And that's why we went with it, right? I mean, ease of use, number one, right? Texting in the app is just, people seem to enjoy that better than opening and checking emails, right? Because we're just more used to that sort of immediate notification. But also the translation, that, you know, there's, we can't do that, we can't have that in Infinite Campus, which is unfortunate.
Okay, thank you.
To that level, yep.
Second, language learners, you mentioned, you know, we know that's a growing student population. I'm curious, has the access test scores, have you shared that? Did I miss that?
We have not, we shared it when we did the SOA plan and probably the second quarterly report. Some of that had some access scores on it.
Okay.
I think that would be something that we'd formally share in August. We're presenting the new draft plan because that will certainly be part of it.
Okay.
And that will certainly point us in the direction of how we're, how we're doing. We have received really good feedback from the Office of Language Acquisition from DESI. They've been up to visit a bunch and we're always in contact with them. Our long-term English learners still remain a challenge in terms of getting them to exit the L identification, become FEL. But we are seeing really good results in the upper grades and lower school particularly of students failing, so grade three and four and five as well. And it's different depending on the student's level of proficiency. But I believe the timony, off the top of my head, I think they failed, which means they passed the access test, 43 students this year, which was exceptional. It mirrored their results from the year prior. So as you know, that's also an accountability target for the school's report card, is dependent on access scores. So we'll share more of that in August as well.
I'd look forward to that. And with the conversation about testing, the literacy, for literacy rates, I wasn't, when I saw the dates that the testing is done, the DIBL testing, like, wow. Right at the end of May, after some kids have done eight full days, right? In certain grades of MCAS testing.
The upper school kids.
Yeah. So I could see why there's that fatigue and for the staff, too. Okay, I just wanted to say that. And finally, oh, the new teacher project. So if I missed it last night, forgive me. This was the last year with them.
Under the GLEAM contract and the three through five contract, it was our last year with TNTP. It does continue through the summer, our work. We are staying with them just under the LAND, the Learning Acceleration Network, which is very similar to GLEAM in terms of how it operates, but it's a free program through DESI. So we've asked to keep our same partners in terms of our consultants to keep that. And so we hope to keep it going, at least through next year.
And is there work to, you will, like, teach the, you'll have more local, I'm not putting this correctly, literacy coordinators, they'll be taking a lead? Because I know that was a really intensive process to. to walk through the, and you know, maybe the rest of the board would like to see the rubrics for that of what was being looked at. Because it's, it really gives a good picture of what needs to be done.
So I think a little bit of that happened this year. They tried to, I know our last couple of walkthroughs with them, they, the consultants had the humanities supervisors be the lead and they joined the team. So it was a modeling, weaning us off of them.
That's what I'm trying to say.
They really, I mean, the two, because we had to share buildings. But the, you know, the two buildings that I, because they're here at the same time. Lisa and I can't be in the same place at the same time. So the two buildings I was in, it was very clear that the supervisor of humanities was leading the conversation, what we're looking for, where we're going. And then when we came back to debrief. Led the conversation. There was some prompting from the TNTP consultant for sure to get us, you know, going in the right direction. But we saw definitely some of that in the May walkthrough for sure. It was almost entirely either the high school department chair was leading it or the humanities supervisors to help us. Right? They did this with us and they facilitated it for two full years. And so this year was really, we've taught you how to do this. Now you have to continue to carry this forward. So keep the, keep these walkthroughs. You know, we're going to keep going to walkthroughs. Keep the same process because that's the, that's the lens and the focus we need to continue implementing this work. Right? If it's focused on, it will continue to happen. So we're excited about that.
And I will say the literacy action plan we're designing to go forward is very much focused on capacity building to make sure then it's not just owned by the humanities supervisors and the teachers who happen to teach ELA and also sustainability. So we've spent a lot of time to try to spread our wings a little bit that way.
I look forward to hearing more about that.
Yeah. We can include, that will be probably included in the strategic draft as well.
So, okay. So you better rest up for another long meeting.
Yeah.
And you know the one thing in hearing about, you know, what's going on in the schools? The celebration at the Timony for the kids who are moving out? I don't know if it's worth it, if it's appropriate, if anyone else is interested.
For you guys to be invited, hundred percent.
I always like to go.
Yep.
You know, but I know we all have stuff going on during the day. But even if we're included in the newsletters that are sent out by the school every Friday, the newsletters go out, right? From the principals. Can I, would it be work?
So you can't, so this is, people have asked us, I can't even be on those emails.
Really?
Right. So when I'm checking, I just go to the website because they're all posted.
That's the best way to do it.
That's the best way to do it is because each principal posts their own newsletter on their website each week. Infinite Campus can't add somebody. I can't, I can't be a pretend person because I'm already a person. I can't be a pretend like parent or person in a group that gets a newsletter attached to like the Timony School or the.
Okay. I guess last time. Okay.
They are all, I mean, they really, you know, the principals are really good about making sure they're all posted so you can see them, but.
But I think that would give us a better idea of what's going on because you can't always keep track.
Yeah. I made a note when Member Maxwell was talking earlier about that might be a good thing to share out at school committee meetings about what's upcoming in the month ahead in terms of engagement activities or things happening at different schools you might want to partake in.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
What is the, sorry. I didn't know if you guys saw my hand.
No, go ahead.
What is the fourth grade celebration? What is, what is that about?
I can't hear.
The fourth grade celebration?
Yeah. She had mentioned something about a fourth grade celebration.
Me? Yes.
Member.
The one that I, I mentioned, Member Maxwell, that I went to?
No.
Oh.
Oh, I'm talking about the, was this at the Timony? Ms. Maxwell?
Yeah. You were just talking about a fourth grade celebration.
Oh, the students who are moving out of the ELL.
Oh, that's, that's great.
The testing. Yeah. Yeah.
And I mentioned that. I'm not sure if that's what you were talking about when I was at the Timony. I don't know what day, when it was, but close to the end of the year. It was a, we did the L celebration with the parents and then the fourth grade, the whole fourth grade was doing a multicultural presentation. So the kids all set up their multicultural. They did slides and a presentation for their families that same day.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yep. And then, you know, the other buildings, I think the CGS had, they all have a little bit of something in those grades. One school had, I think, a wax museum. The Tenny does that as well. The biographies. Yep. The CGS did a similar thing with the wax museum where the kids do some research on, you know, influential, you know, people in history and dress up and present and do some research. So that's always fun. Okay?
Are there any other questions? All right. So committee.
Um, so.
So the red part.
Right.
Right.
So before we talk about nominations for the superintendent evaluation, I just want to explain a little bit about what the committee does and what the evaluation looks like. So each of us will receive an evaluation form from Martha. And we have to fill it out. Everyone is required to fill it out. And you give a number, one through four, but you need to add evidence and supporting evidence for your number if you do not just say met. So even if it's superior or exceeding, whatever it is, you still need to justify that, that response. So it's not just a simple check a box. It really is thoughtful. And the binder that we have with all the evidence, it really does come into play. You need to go through that and be very thoughtful about grading. And when you're doing that, it's also, you have to keep in mind, it's the goals that were set forth in September. So you may read something and think, well, the superintendent didn't necessarily do that or did this really well, but it has nothing to do with the goals and those don't matter, unfortunately. So you really have to focus on her goals, on her, her, what's it called? The.
The evidence.
The evidence. And really support your answers. Once those are done, they all get collected. And then the subcommittee goes through them and has to make a final report for, and that will be presented in August. Now, what's interesting about this is that you collect everybody's responses and you don't necessarily average the responses. You have to read the evidence that's given and figure out the will of the committee. And so it's not just a real straightforward thing. And it does take a couple of meetings during the summer to get this done. So it does mean that we will be meeting in person in July and the beginning of August to go through this and read everybody's. The other thing I want to say is that all of our responses are public documents. And so they are able to be looked at by the public. As well as the superintendent, her review is actually public during one of our meetings. And she is the only person in the city who gets a public review, which I personally feel is a little bit unfair, but it is what it is. So we need to be very thoughtful with our evidence and we need to be very thoughtful with how we respond because it is all very public. And I guess that's all I have to say.
I nominate Member Keegan.
Not there yet. I have to ask for it.
Sorry.
Are there any nominations for the superintendent evaluation committee?
I nominate Member Keegan.
So moved.
I accept the nomination. I would like to nominate Member Donovan.
I, I second that.
Member Donovan, will you accept that?
Yes. Thank you.
I will also nominate Member DeZoglio.
I will second that.
I will accept that nomination.
All right. Do we need to vote? I apologize. I missed that last one. Who nominated you though? I'm sorry. And I seconded it. All right. Do we need votes on those? Yes. Do you want to do, do you want to bundle them all together and just do one roll call? Or do you want to do each one separate? We can do them all together.
Yeah, let's do them together.
All right.
All right.
So this is for all three nominations together. Ryan DeZoglio?
Yes.
Mary Beth Donovan?
Yes.
Lori Keegan?
Yes.
Kristin Maxwell?
Yes.
Daniel Chabilla?
Yes.
Kenneth Wolet?
Yes.
Manneal Perry's out. Unanimous.
May I have a motion and a second to approve the title change for FY25 ESL to XL at the CGS?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Member DeZoglio, second by Member Chabilla. Discussion?
One question. Is there a fiscal impact to this change?
Zero. It's just a title change. That's why I did it this way. We just, after looking at numbers, Dr. Volobsky and Principal Proetti and I, the position that was in the budget is a ESL position titled and we needed to be XL because the numbers in the Excel classroom. So it's not a new FTE at all. It's just a title change, but you have the authority to approve that.
All right. Roll call please, Martha. Ryan DeZoglio?
Yes.
Mary Beth Donovan?
Yes.
Lori Keegan?
Yes.
Kristin Maxwell?
Yes.
Daniel Chabilla?
Yes.
Kenneth Wolet?
Yes.
Unanimous.
May I have a motion and a second to approve the bid award for RFP 2401 to Leadership and Literacy Foundation, 16 Commonwealth Avenue, Salisbury, Massachusetts, 01952.
I motion it.
A second? We need a second to discuss it. Can we have a discussion? I'm sorry.
I'll second it so we can have the discussion.
Discussion. Member Chabilla.
So I'm a little disappointed, this also is going to be moved back a little bit, huh? I'm a little disappointed that there's nobody here.
Well, Michael Luciano was going to join us via Zoom. I did invite them per your request. Ian is just seen with. Michael, are you there?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Awesome.
I am now undisappointed.
Undisappointed. Yes. Because I did invite them and he obliged and was able to join us via Zoom tonight. So thank you, Mike.
Michael, thank you very much. It's helpful to have someone here because I feel like this has kind of come out from behind a bush like a freight train. And I know that this has been an ongoing conversation for what, 40 some odd years?
A long time.
Yeah. So I just, I want to understand where we are and what we're doing. So my first question, and I don't know, Michael, if it's to you or Dr. Quang to you. There's a vendor coming in to manage a youth center. Who's managing that vendor? Is that us or the city?
Us.
So is the school committee effectively becoming a landlord?
Yes.
Okay. I guess, Michael, to you, in your engagement now and looking at this, what kind of assessment was done? And I asked this, knowing that back, I want to say 2016, 2017, the MAIC received an earmark from the state, I believe from, I don't know if it was at the time, Representative DeZoglio or Lynda Dean Campbell to do that assessment through DCF. I know an assessment was done. I just want to know, was that used? Was there a new one done to update post COVID? What are we looking at to make sure this is going to be an effective facility?
Sure. So the assessment that was done previously, and this was before my time as the executive director for Leadership and Literacy, was for the Pleasant Valley School. And we had several done from a few engineering firms across the state. And the ultimate recommendation was a teardown of that facility for various reasons. Environmental, the bathroom situation. There was a few reasons and it was recommended that we tear down that building and start from scratch. And I think we all agreed that that was not a path that we wanted to go down. So some time passed. The central school became available, tented someplace. We've been investigating what it would take to renovate that building. We have done some walks with the building inspector for the city and some of the facilities department. And we have identified some areas, mainly safety concerns, lead eventment, improving the bathroom space in the building. And we have secured, and we have $1.5 million ready to roll in state earmarks that were secured by then Representative DeZoglio, now Auditor DeZoglio. and state earmarks that were, um, secured by then, um, Representative DeZoglio, now Auditor DeZoglio. Uh, and we are prepared to spend, uh, a very healthy portion of that amount, whatever it takes, um, to make sure the building is safe, renovated, um, before we bring in students.
So, the MAIC assessment that was done was not so much facility-related, but more program-focused and need-focused?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I will acknowledge, based on my understanding of that assessment, that it was a little bit, let's call it tilted towards having it at, uh, what, are we still calling it Holy Family or stu-, whatever they are?
The grounds between Holy Family and the chimney.
I don't know what they're called anymore.
Yeah.
So, um, it was a little tilted towards Holy Family, but I don't think that detracted from the social and structural component of the programs. Do you guys have anything similar? Would that be part of the development phase?
Uh, I am unfamiliar, and I'll have to get on top. I, I am not familiar with that study, um, it was done before and hasn't been passed along, so I have some homework to do, um, to review that, and I'm happy to, uh, make that happen. But at this time, you know, I'll have to, I'll get back to you because I am not familiar, uh, with that study, it has been passed along to me.
I do, can I just comment though? Uh, because I've been a part of it, so I wasn't a huge part of that assessment, that was before my time as well. Um, but since then, and Michael, you, uh, have been, I think, a part of this. Part, the second part of the question is, we, we do have, uh, and we are creating a new group now, and, not because they haven't tried to get it off the ground, but more for us getting students. But we have a My Voice group, a Methuen Youth Voice Group, and they were pretty integral. They worked with, uh, a couple of leaders in the community. Uh, we had mostly high school students in that group at the time. They actually got visited by the then Attorney General, uh, now Governor Healy, uh, came here, you know, speaking about what the youth of Methuen need, who don't have, you know, the, the whole point of this student voice group was to talk about the things that they don't have access to, if they, if they don't play sports, have the means, right? The, the different things that a, a lot of our community kids do participate in, but we have a ton of kids who don't. And so, what is it that they wanted out of a youth center? There was a ton of meetings and time. I know I attended several of those as well at the time. Um, Michael is now the Executive Director here, so it was a different person running those meetings, but they were held here at the high school with our kids. Um, and we actually had the principals identify, uh, additional students, but we're including the middle school students, so grades five through now, you know, the incoming 12th graders, um, to create a new My Voice group that can help us, uh, and I say us, them, whoever it is, because we're not running a youth center, right? We're giving them the space to do it, but they are our kids. And so, we want to make sure that we are supporting our students having some voice in that. So that is something that I know I was a part of, I wasn't part of that initial one, I, I've seen it. Um, you know, I know it just, it didn't come to fruition the way that it had initially, we, the city and everybody thought it was going to, but, you know, just the conversation has not, has not, uh, died. You know, the, the, we don't have a place for youth to go, to do anything. You know, North Andover does, Haverhill does, Lawrence does, Drake, uh, all of our kids are going somewhere else. And, um, you know, I know the mayor and I have had countless meetings about this in the past four years. And, uh, you know, when Branch Street did happen, the Tentatessen Place building just felt like it actually was the right type of space, because it has the gym, it has a fully functioning kitchen in the first floor as well, that they could use for classes and programs. Um, it has an outside area, not awesome one, but it has an outside area. Um, and it's just so much more accessible than Pleasant Valley ever would be for our kids who can actually access it via bicycles or walking in the center of town. So that is a part, so, Michael, not, not because of you, but because of me, I haven't gotten back to you on the date, trying to get all these kids together in the summer, but that is a part of us trying to get the kids involved in some of those conversations.
All right. So, I, I don't know, Michael, if you can see that, but I have a, a litany of questions. Um, so, in, in fair warning, at some point, I will make a motion to table this, but I want to give everyone the opportunity to speak on it. But, uh, from a high level, I have real concerns over the building. I, I mean, I, I know that you guys are planning to invest, well, it's like half a million bucks at, at baseline plan into fixing that thing. But I know right now we have the, the DPW and the Fire Department in there as, let's, let's call them squatters. Um, and I don't, I don't see how we can repair this building, do a, um, a lead abatement. And I, I learned today that there was a, an asbestos abatement done, uh, I don't know, a decade or so ago. Um, but it was in, probably an encapsulation and not a removal, so any repairs are going to be loosening up that asbestos, which is going to cause even more problems. Um, I have concerns over the insurance for the renovation, because the insurance here was operating, not a build plan. I don't, I don't want to stand in the way of the youth center, because I love the idea of having somewhere to go. I grew up in Wilmington and we had a youth center. Like, it was, for that sixth through eighth grade time period when, you know, it was cool, that's where we went. But, this RFP was very well-written, and I can say that based on the fact that I've written RFPs and responses and read more than I can count. But I don't see anything in this RFP that says, kids are going to come here. Uh, just, it, nothing in this document portrayed to me that any of the teenagers, younger teenagers, twe- tweens, is that still a thing? The tweens are going to say, I want to go to the youth center after school today. And now, knowing some of the folks associated with this and knowing Auditor DeZoglio, I have full faith that anything she puts her mind to is going to succeed. So I have no doubt in that, but I think there is more, more thought and more planning that needs to go into how this develops, instead of me hitting you with a list of questions that I broke down by build and financials and timelines, staffing and safety, programming, and then what I call legal stuff. I mean, I'm more than happy to share these with the superintendent, and she can forward them over to you guys just for your own, your own knowledge. I think there is an absolute value here, I think that you guys presented a great case and how this could, should be structured and, and could work. But where it really missed the mark for me was, was the program and the draw. Not that this is a, a revenue generating thing, but how do you bring in customers? That's, that's the big question for me. And I, when my kids are old enough, I would really like a place for them to go, that's not my house. So, it's, it's something I would love to work with you folks on, I just, this document left a lot of questions for me. Thank you.
Member DeZoglio?
Thank you. So, I was here when Mara Healy and that whole presentation was here, and if people were there, they would see that whole cafeteria downstairs was full of kids. Um, coming with, like, their surveys, their little PowerPoint, saying that the majority of Methuen wanted a youth center. So, if people were there, they would have saw all that statistics. I've talked to numerous parents since I've taken office. They need a place for their kids. I've had, sat down with meetings regarding the central building, and they said it is up to date, they, they are going to work on it to make it more for suitable for all kids. And that's what the 1.5 million dollars were for, was to put it towards that. And if there's anything else that was going to come up, we would, we would move forward, we would talk to our, uh, state reps. But that's why we put this 1.5 million dollars, because, I, again, I, this has been a couple of years, so I don't know, but that was just enough to kind of get the building to get kids in, um, from my understanding. And again, I don't think we're saying we're going to put kids in a building that's going to be unsafe. Like, we obviously, it was clear-cut, it was, it was a very good, um, understanding from our state reps at the time, because I know Christina Minicucci was one of them, um, which fought very hard from North Andover she was from, to get us into that building, um, as well. So, to, I, I think, and I think they came to a meeting too, um, one time, I know, uh, well, at the time Senator DeZoglio came here to talk about it too.
Multiple times.
Multiple times since, so you can always watch the tapes of those meetings to kind of get a clear indication of what these things were going to, uh, be like. So that's why I am all for this, because we've already went over this stuff. We, we, like, I, I'm kind of getting very passionate, because I feel like people just didn't watch, or didn't do their due diligence to ask questions. And to postpone this, you're propos-, you're, you're, you're keeping our kids from being able to go to a place, um, to hang out with their friends afterwards. And again, we're not going to put our kids in danger. I don't think the asbestos, of course, I'm all for knowing of the asbestos, do we, quick question, do we know anything about the asbestos right now?
Yeah. So they're, they're definitely will need, I don't, I'm not sure why you said lead, but we definitely need abatements in the building.
All right.
Yes.
So, if we...
We, we know that, and, what's that?
Ceiling.
The ceilings, that's right, I'm sorry, the ceilings have the lead paint. Um, so yeah, I'm sorry, so yes, we do need, we do know that there is work to be done, that's what we've been talking about, the infrastructure of the actual site, in order to have kids in that building, right? The adults, it didn't matter as much, because they weren't, sadly, we weren't walking around eating paint. I know, that was a little lighthearted for that, but, um, there are rules and regulations that we're going to have kids back in the building, so everybody's aware of that, and the work that would need to be done in that building is, is significant to have any students, right? So if we kept it, you know, the, the outlook too is, the second floor is empty right now. So the question is, what are we going to do with it? Like, what do we, you know, that, that, that's where, where we are too, and I think, you know, and I don't want to speak for the mayor, because he's not here, but in all of our conversations, you know, we do have some use, the city does need some space, and so, they know they're using that as some of their space. The adult ed center has to be in that building, the Courier is just no longer, you know, a viable option, and I think this committee knows that we're going to, we're going to be talking about those two properties at some point. We have to, we have to really have some, um, pointed conversations at the city level about the PV property and the Courier property, what that means for the school committee, what do we do when we turn that over? I know there's some, you know, different ideas about what that agreement should look like, so just, we, we have to be able to focus on that conversation too. But, you know, with the central building, it, it is, it is for school purposes right now, it's under our purview, it's under your purview. You know, so, uh, do I already feel like a landlord? Yes. Because I'm not in that building, and I have other people and programs that Bruce does go, and that we are responsible for the facilities, and we know the building, and it makes sense. Um, so, so our conversations have been, you know, let's, let's, you know, and I, I said that in my memo, I'm not saying anything I didn't already say to all of you. This has been, and it is challenging, um, because I have been involved in these conversations for six years, and they've been happening far before I entered the superintendent position, you know, and I, again, that wasn't within my purview in the role I had, but, um, if we have this opportunity and space, I think that was where we were thinking, is, I'm not running a youth center, right? I, I, I'm not, we're, we don't, we don't have the capacity to run a youth center. But can we give, can we give the, the, the space like we did? And I don't want to say we, but the city gave the, what is the building that the YMCA is in? The Barker School, it was, they, they leased that for a dollar, or whatever it is, right? Um, you know, to have that space. So it's, it's not perfectly similar, but kind of similar in that, you know, we all believe that we need something for our youth in the city. I do, I don't have the capacity to run it, but I believe that our kids need it. And if we have the opportunity where this, the space is here, and I don't have, there is nothing in the second floor, so I just want you guys to know that, right? There's nothing in the second floor of the central building right now. We're holding that, well, we were holding it for this RFP, right? The space that people need is being used. The, the Adult Learning Center is on the first floor in the half of the building, DPW's the second half, and we have the Fire Department in the, the renovated basement area. So, tho- those spaces are being used appropriately. You know, it's not an empty building, but I guess, you know, that, that was, that's been our conversation this, this, the six years that we've been having this conversation, and more actively the past four, is, um, when the PV just wasn't the viable option, I mean, we took tours there, and it was going to cost millions of dollars, right, to either renovate or just tear down or rebuild for a youth center, and that wasn't the kind of funds that the senator at the time had, or, uh, the city had to invest in it. So, this is, this is, you know, there's been a transgression of this conversation and how we got to this point over many, many years. And it is challenging, and, uh, I've been part of it, but we've had three different school committees a part of it in the past six years, three different city councils, and two different mayors, right, since I've been superintendent. So, so there is a lot of that, that we, we've been consistent in our conversations, the people who have been kind of behind the scenes having them, have been very consistent about the work that we're doing and trying to work to figure out how we're going to support this. So this is, again, this is where we are. And so while it seems like it's coming out quickly, uh, it actually seems like it's taken forever from where I'm sitting, uh, because we haven't been able to get to this point where we actually were writing the RFP and have a bid out there for this actual thing to, to even think about happening, right? And I think having us, the space first is the most important thing that any group needs to be able to build the programs around the space. So that's where, that's where I'm coming from. That's where my conversations and my head has been about this particular project. And again, I'm not running the youth center. Am I going to be a landlord? I guess, yes. But, again, we already are, because there's already people occupying that building, and I'm still making sure that that building is safe and running the way it's supposed to, and our facilities manager is still making sure that everything is in good working order, right? So, um, yeah, I mean, that's where I'm at. So, you know, I wrote in the memo what my thoughts are on recommending this moving forward, and the mayor and I did agree on this memo going forward, that, you know, we would recommend that this move forward to the city council. And the reason, so the school committee, while has the authority, the final say comes with the city council, and I can explain that a little bit. I started to explain it in the last paragraph in my memo. But, um, because we have a city building, and we are proposing, potentially proposing for it to be leased, used, at, at less than fair market value, by law, the city council has to approve that. They have to approve the use of any city facility that is being used at, at less than fair market value. So if, for example, if I said to, if you guys said, let's put out an RFP to lease it, how much would that be? I'd go out and do an assessment, fair market value, we'd lease it for whatever the square footage is, and I'd be competitive with other offices in Methuen for lease, right? So that's why the city council has the last say in this, and the city solicitor has been involved in a lot of this conversation as well, about what that resolution would, how it would read, and how it would write. So the city council would have to agree for this purpose, and also agree to be able to do that and not get funds for that site. Does that make clarity? I know I went into like 10,000 other things than what we were originally focused on, uh, and I apologize for that, but it just, uh, I just wanted to share with you a little bit about where I, my perspective on this and this project, and where it's coming from, is, again, I'm not, I'm not running a youth center. Like, I'm, what's that? Yeah, my free time. So, so we're just, we, we are hoping to be able to provide the space for this to come to fruition. You know, that's really what, what we're trying to do here, and getting that there's questions and, you know, people haven't been involved in the conversations makes perfect sense, which is why we're presenting this tonight.
Member Maxwell?
Yeah, I have some questions, and I know, um, member Woollett does too. Uh, my concern, I, I am all for a youth center, I really, really would love to see a youth center here in Methuen. I think, I think the kids deserve it and need it. Um, however, this, um, I have, I guess I have just some questions about this particular youth center. So, one, I just wanted to touch on the, uh, asbestos issue. The asbestos becomes dangerous when it's disturbed, but when it's not disturbed, it doesn't, it's, you know, it's not dangerous. But, um, m- my concern is that, you know, we talk about how in Methuen, you know, kids struggle to afford to do certain activities or anything like that, you know? The schools are kind of stared away from doing certain things. Is there going to be a fee associated with being a member of this youth center? Um, and is it open to just Methuen kids, other surrounding towns can't join? And the other question I had was, it says here that your first, in your first year, you know, you'd be looking to serve over 100 Methuen youth. A hundred is not a lot, especially for a youth center. And, I mean, just in the schools alone, we have, I think, 7,000 students, you know? So, who gets to choose who those 100 kids are? And, um, how do they get into this program? What is going to be offered at this program? Is it actually going to be a youth center where there's ping pong tables and coaches and TVs and game consoles and games outside? And, you know, what type of youth center is this going to? I guess I just have more questions, so I would love to see a youth center, I'm not standing in your way at all, I'm just, I'm just kind of gray. I don't, I don't see the big picture.
Sure, um, I can jump in here. Um, we want this center to be completely inclusive, so there will be no fees, um, for students to access the center. Now, there may be certain programs that there is an incurred cost. However, we are working with grantors to do that. But, to use the youth center and the majority of our program, uh, no fee associated, it is open to all youth. Um, we are open to expanding it to the surrounding community, but we want our focus to be, uh, Methuen youth. Um, so that's a discussion, but...
I think that's a great idea, like, just Methuen kids.
Yeah.
The RFP was written and very focused on the fact that we want it with Methuen youth, for sure.
Okay.
Yeah, that's why it's the Methuen Youth and Community Center, so we do look to, you know, help serve the wider community. But the focus right up front, Methuen youth, um, and just to reiterate, no fees. Um, we want this to be a space, um, you know, not only for the student athlete, we want this to be a space, um, you know, where the arts are tested, where we can do coding programs, where we can do, uh, you know, we want to renovate the kitchen, we want to use the gym, of course. So we want this to be a space for students of all kinds, not necessarily only focus on the student athlete, which of course are welcome as well. Uh, we have already had some earmarks come and go in the past fiscal years, and we've already purchased some fun things, like ping pong tables, chairs, couches, TVs, gaming councils. We have a, a bunch of brand-new computers, um, some MacBooks. Uh, we have some PCs, uh, ready to loan out to students, ready for a computer lab. Um, so, yeah, there's going to be elements of a traditional youth center here. Um, we also want to not dictate to the students what this center's going to be, while we have some ideas and we have a few programs lined up. We really want to lean on the Student Advisory Council, um, the My Voice Council, which we've already had one cohort come through, uh, previously. Uh, a couple areas that they really want to focus on was financial literacy and mental health support, which we've already allocated some funds, uh, to anyways. We have, as the superintendent mentioned, uh, another list of students from middle school all the way up through high school. We've identified some youth, uh, we're going to land on some time for the first meeting of that group. We're going to land on some time for the first meeting of that group some point this summer. We have a youth coordinator who we are very close to hiring and very close to the age group, young college student who we're considering hiring. I will be a part of these meetings as well. But we want to lean on that group to see what their needs are. That will create the ripple effect. We want to bring the students in. They will tell us what their needs are. We want to supplement what the school, Methuen Public Schools is doing and offer them what they need. So really, the way I look at it is, they'll tell us what they need and it's my job to help execute that. I'll be honest with you, I am not a program director. I do have a lot of experience working in this field, but my expertise really comes in finance and the renovation of the building. One of our first hires is going to be a program director who will bring on that expertise. But we want to get this youth council together and really let them be the guiding light. Tell us what their needs are, what do they want to see out of this youth center? And then our job will be to execute it.
Just a follow up question. You said it's for students in six through 12, like that council group? Are are we reaching, like, who are involved in those groups? Is it like school couns-, student councils or like? What kind of, first, what group of kids is going to be on that? And then second, what's the max amount of kids that are allowed in that space?
In the council?
No, in the, like, in the youth center, like, once you're up and running. How many, what's the max number of kids?
I'll have to get back, I'll have to work with the the city to get an answer on the max, the safe amount of space. I do not have an answer on that one. I also haven't had a chance to meet this new cohort yet. The superintendent worked with the principals of the schools to identify a starting handful of youth to be this next cohort. I haven't had the chance to meet them yet, so I can't speak on who is exactly involved. However, we want to keep that, again, inclusive, open to any Methuen students that want to be part of that leadership council.
Thank you.
All right, member Willett?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. And to just reinforce what member Maxwell indicated, my biggest drawback about the proposal, and I thought it was a very positive, comprehensive, detailed, incis-, insightful proposal. My biggest drawback, and it's something that I feel you need to revisit that aspect of it, is for the first year, only 100 clients will be serviced at the youth center. I think you're going to severely constrain the services at that youth center. And you're going to grossly, excuse me, grossly exceed. The demand is going to be outrageous as compared to that small universe of 100 clients that will be served. So that was something that I'm very concerned about. I think it needs to be revisited because if you have an organizational hierarchy, if you have a grant apparatus, if you have people that you plan on hiring and they do an outreach and you're going to be seeking foundational, nonprofit governmental resources, and during that first year, you're only going to be servicing 100 clients, I think you're going to be severely limited. And it's going to be grossly underserving and the huge demand it's going to entail. And that's something either through a survey or outreach, I I think you're going to really exceed the 100 clients. So that was something that I thought was the biggest drawback. And also, are we ADA compliant with the central school? Because I know we did renovations in the past. Are we ADA compliant with the central school? Because if we're talking about, in the proposal, it mentioned ADA compliance. And I thought when you do a renovation according to the ADA Act of 1990, anytime you do a renovation to a significant renovation to a building, you have to make sure it's ADA compliant. So that was something I was concerned about. And that's something that should be reported probably back to the school committee.
As far as ADA compliance, we did do a walkthrough with the building inspector. And there was a couple of things. I think we're, we're well on the way there. I know we have elevator access and some other things. I think we need to repave the path for wheelchairs to get up into the building. We also identified maybe automatic door openers on some of the doors. We also have looked at potentially creating exclusive access or entryways into the building for the safety and security of the students and making sure that those entryways would also be ADA compliant is something that we've looked at as well, so.
Okay. So I, again, and just in conclusion, I'm leery about supporting a motion to table. At the same time, I think we need to buy some additional time because I am very concerned about the inflexibility of the 100 client cap. And it's a very small universe when it's a huge demand. I I know from Methuen Island to Naval, that place alone will probably exceed the hundreds of clients. And if you're trying to broaden it into not only teenagers, but also to young adults, is that going to be the entire universe? Is you're going to do a piecemeal and just target the youth? There's 100 clients include young adults. So that was something that you really have to revisit that aspect of. I think it's very limiting and finite to have just 100 clients that you'll be servicing. And that's just my personal opinion. I think the demand is going to far exceed that number.
I certainly hope we exceed it. Some more thought definitely needs to be put in that. And I think you mentioned something that would be great to do, should be a survey, to see what the demand would be. But our goal is certainly to exceed it. And maybe we shot too low with the 100. We certainly hope we do exceed that. And I think a survey would definitely be something that's warranted.
And see, the problem is if we approve something and it becomes ironclad and it's part of your mindset of philosophical organizational that that first year, you're going to target only 100 clients, we become pigeonholed as a school committee and we'll be receiving those calls from constituents. And if there's a waiting list, I think it's a disservice. So I would revisit that 100 clients. And to reinforce what member Maxwell indicated, in order for the safety of the building and the capacity limit, that number should be realized first. And it should, well, you're talking about staff and organization and clients. That should match what the expectation and goals of your first year would be. Because you already have, you indicated, you have an assortment of governmental resources. You're going to be engaging in a grant apparatus. You're going to be reaching out to private donors. You're going to be having partnerships with businesses. So you already have the groundwork in place. I would really encourage you to revisit that 100 cap. And that's just my personal opinion. Thank you.
Appreciate that feedback and we will certainly take it to heart and explore that.
All right, member Donovan?
Hi, hi, Michael.
Hi.
You got to talk closer, Mary Beth. I know he's not going to be able to hear you.
So I just want to make sure I have a really good understanding of this. You folks are willing to commit at least, what was it?
$500,000.
$500,000 to do repairs and make that section of the building safe, welcoming, appropriate?
Yes.
Okay.
That is our minimum commitment.
And since the theme of the school committee seems to be roofs, you missed a lot of it previously. But tell me about, do we know the roof needs to be repaired there?
Yes, we do.
And do we have an estimate? And that would be a shared?
Bruce does.
Bruce does. And according to the paperwork, it would be a shared cost according to what they're willing to commit to?
Yes. Because it has to get done and we still own the building.
I know.
Yes. And it's, as as all of you know, it's historical. So it's not a roof repair like this, the other schools.
It says in the quote that it's 50,000. I don't know if you guys know that that's there, just.
I think that's some of it, yeah.
Yeah.
We don't have an estimate. But we'll get one from Bruce. Got it, okay.
Yeah, none of that's going to happen unless this goes through so that we can have real numbers and bids, yep.
Yeah, and I think we're all aware of that. So we have, like, potential, it's been 40 years. Forty years, I believe, this city started talking about.
Did you say 40?
I think it's 40. Larry Giudano started leading the campaign. So I don't think anyone's against the youth center at all. I don't know why it never really got legs in this community. I've always wondered why it never happened before now. And that's a concern. But, okay, so, so we have that to look at. Repairs to a building that needs to be repaired. Getting some kids in. Michael, who's on the board of your organization? I I went, I Googled it and I I ended up at an old website and saw some old names. Could you share who's on the board, please?
Yes, so we have Anthony Ferraro and Aaron Powers and Danielle Kylie on our board.
Okay. And will you be there full, will you be a full time employee? You have quite a number of people who appear to be ready or that you plan to have on board, looking at your list of potential employees?
Yes.
So you're full time?
We have, we do have, like I said, we have a list of, we want to get a commitment before we make higher, some of these hires and some of these renovations. But we do have two candidates lined up for a programming director and a youth coordinator, who will be our first two hires. As I lead, you know, the charge for the grant funding, the management of the money that we currently have and the renovations to the building, I want to bring in someone with the expertise in the programming side because that is definitely an area I lack. And maybe, you know, some of the feedback that was missing from the, this committee and the RFP, which I took the lead on, maybe my lack of programming expertise shown through a little bit in the RFP response.
And also, in the paperwork you provided to us, you said that while the, while the work was being done, correct me if I'm wrong, while the work was being done, you would try some programming elsewhere? Did I read that right? There'd be some effort to get stuff started?
Yeah, we're, we're open to kicking off programming in a temporary space. We have had, and I'll have to get back to you on the exact, we do have a couple of spaces that have been offered up as temporary space to kick off some of the programming. I know in this very building, Methuen High School, we can kick off the My Voice Council. So we are open to that. We would like to kind of see the two pillars. While the real estate is being developed and the building is becoming a safe and inclusive space, we would also like to raise the pillar of the programming aspect as well. So that once the building is accessible and safe, that we can really hit the ground running and not start this programming from zero at that point. We want to raise both of these efforts simultaneously.
Well, I guess the other piece of that, the programming would tell you if there truly is an interest, if kids are ready to come out. We know, we assume they are, but until you run a program, how do you know, right? And the quality of the program and what it is. So I I'm really intrigued by that, but that's not why we're here tonight. We're here to talk about this lease. Okay, so I'm, how long do you think this kind of work would take? The actual physical work in the building?
Well, we want, we didn't want to spend money moving forward. There's definitely going to be, you know, we're going to have to get some quotes, do some feasibility studies. We know generally what we're looking at from our walkthroughs with the city, the facilities department and building inspector. So we know generally what we're looking at. Our next step, if we can get a commitment and assign lease, we want to start putting funds towards bringing in the contractors, getting a more concrete timeline. Based on our understanding right now, we anticipate, you know, about six to eight months before the youth center will be ready. So we'd like to start the work sooner rather than later so we can have this up and running before, well before next summer.
And if this, the costs exceed, because you never know what you're going to run into in an old building, although you've had a preview, if the costs exceed what you committed to, what would happen?
We'd have to take it to the board. I mean, we do have additional funding, you know, with that funding. And we're, we're bringing in more. We're talking to multiple charitable organizations. Are ready to get grant funding for a variety of things to bring on new people, programming. But before any of that can kick off, the safety of the building has to happen. So, you know, our minimum commitment is the 500,000. We are prepared to spend more than that if it's warranted. But I don't make that decision on my own. So it would absolutely be a discussion, but we are prepared to put additional funds in if it's warranted.
And how long is this lease for? I forget.
I'll have to look.
We're all wondering, yeah.
No, it's in the, it's in there.
Three years?
No. No. Not three years. Sorry, we did a, we did a, like a long term lease with the opportunity to renew for like 25 years. We tried to, we tried to mimic what the city did with the YMCA. Right, Michael?
Correct.
I don't have the actual RFP in front of me. I'm sorry.
On my computer somewhere, so excuse me, I'll try to find the information on the original RFP.
Well, you know, we can get the answer to that at some point. I I want to defer to my, I'm sure there may be a few more questions.
Yes, I actually have a question. How long do you have to use the money? Because the money is coming from state earmarks. And how long do you have to actually use that money?
So that's an excellent point. We do have through fiscal year 2025 for 500,000 of that and through fiscal year 2026 for the other 1 million for the ones we have secured in state earmarks so far. So, you know, especially that 500,000, you know, the longer we wait, comes further and further into jeopardy. So we would like to start drawing down those funds. I know when I say fiscal year 26, it sounds, you know, like a long way away, but there's work to get done and we'd like to start putting that money to use.
Thank you. Member Shabilia?
So first, to member DeZaglio's point, never would have assumed that we'd put our children in an unsafe place. That would be a ludicrous thought for me to have. And for anyone to say this is a place for kids to go, our children are not just going to go somewhere. These kids are perpetually connected, as evidenced by our conversation at this table last night. They have their phones, they have their games, they're playing, I don't know, whatever these group games are, these kids play online now. They're 100% perpetually connected all the time. So we need to be able to provide them more, like Michael was saying. To member Willett's point, and Michael, you actually hit on this, we have no idea what the demand is. We, we don't know. We don't know if we're expecting 100 kids. We don't know if we're expecting 1,000 kids. And anyone who's ever done an event at a school knows that number's going to change and it's going to swing hard day to day. Like, it's just the reality of the demographic. I know, Michael, you had mentioned doing some surveys. I am never opposed to doing some surveys to understand what we're working with. No matter how many surveys have been done in the past, it's, it's an ever changing demographic. So, I mean, some of my, my, my first question here, more to Dr. Quong, a vendor comes in to run a youth center. We're ultimately responsible for that vendor the same way we are for NRT or the vendor that does our staffing for our agencies or any other vendor, right?
No. So it doesn't work that way. So basically, our authority is the building use, right? Our authority is not running the youth programming, getting into the details of how it's run. Our job right now is to decide if we're willing to use, let a third party use that space. So, and the lease, the lease is, that was in the RFP, was exactly like it was for the Barker School. It's in 99, the city's committing to 99 years. And they can't open, and that was when the RFP was put out. And they can't open, and that was when the RFP was put out, but no sooner than July 1st, 2024. So that clearly is, we're beyond that, that date. So they're going to be able to meet that. But, but no, it's not, they're not, they're not employees, they're not a product of the Methuen Public Schools. They're, we're landlords because they're using our space, but that's where it ends. That's where it ends. So, so yes, we have to make sure, you know, they have to make sure the building is up to all the codes they need to have children in the building. And of course, that was part of the RFP as well. It's going to have to be a joint effort, because we, the city owns the building, right? So they can't just go in and do what they want to the building when they want to. They can't knock down walls, they can't do things like that, right? They can renovate, they can paint, they can do some of those similar things you would expect a leasee, but everything has to be done. That was how the lease was written by all of the legal counsel that worked on this as well.
So if there was ever a short flow of money, we, you know, we hit a fiscal cliff, fiscal disaster, who would end up, how would that be resolved?
There really isn't a resolution, because I'm not getting money from them to use the building.
Right. So that, that would be like...
It's just programming stops, right? It's not like the, the youth programming or this organization is not part of our budget, it's not part of the city budget. It's their own, we're, again, it's just the space that we want to allow the use and let them run the program. This is, again, would not be attached to Methuen Public Schools or a city department for budgetary purposes. So if the funding runs out, their programs don't run, they can't pay their staff. I mean, you know, that's, that's part of, I think, what Michael's job is, as the financial, as the financial person.
Assume that, I just didn't know, my concern from a legal perspective is something happens and there's, becomes a lien on our building, or a million other things that could go wrong. I mean, would we, as a committee, have representation on the board? Or any insight or input, overview, anything?
I don't see it that way. I mean, that's up to the organization, but again, we are, it is about the space. We are not in the business of running non-academic, like, that's not my business, that's not your business. So we're not in the business of running the youth programming. Our business is the Methuen Public Schools programming. This just is an odd situation, because we have a building, right? That is run by Methuen Public Schools that we're keeping occupancy of. You know, if the city owned this building, it would be the same exact thing. They would lease it, and the youth center would be responsible for running the programming. Nobody at the city would be running the program or the books or the financials. It wouldn't be part of our purview.
Right. Would...
Michael, I'm saying that all correctly, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
So I just, I would have concerns, I don't know the size of the space. It's been, I don't know, eight years since I've been anywhere near that building. What happens if too many kids show up? Like, I guess there's a lot of questions and concerns I have. That would be, I guess, programmatic. And I know they're not in our purview, but at the end of the day, if stuff hits the fan, it's landing at that podium. So I guess I just, I, I have some concerns. And again, don't want to stand in the way of the youth center, love the idea, grew up with the youth center, fully understand and would embrace doing it and want to do so. But like, I just, I don't know. I don't know how we create that relationship. Because yes, I get it, we're just a landlord at this point. But the unfortunate reality is, we are operating in very similar spaces with the same population, a population that we are now saying, hey, guys, you should go to the youth center. That's ultimately what's happening. So we're, we're taking on a good deal of risk in doing that. I mean, especially where we have other people in that building. And granted, they're city, city people for the most part, and I'm sure they're all quarried already anyways. But there's, there's just a lot of open, open items that I don't feel like we have any control over and any real direction from, based on the response we received. So that's, I don't want to be viewed as being a roadblock, but I have a little bit of anxiety over how it's currently presented. Member DeZoglio is going to fall out of his chair if we don't give him a chance.
Yeah, just to follow up, to go off Dr. Quong, it's like we rent out our ice rink. We have a third party that comes in and rents the ice rink. If something happens in the ice rink, Ian, you agree with me, or if it doesn't, what? It's different? Why is, why, if they're running a program and something happens with the program, unless it's really involves the ice and the boards or whatever collapses, then, yeah, but if there's like...
It depends on, it depends on the issue.
I see what you're saying, Ian.
Yeah.
It could be a problem amongst a team.
Yeah, or an injury.
That's not our problem.
What they're teaching, that's not on us.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, like, in that, in that regard. Unless it's like the building itself, we wouldn't be liable.
Right.
We don't know that?
I'm not, so I'm not your attorney, but third pile liability, third-party liability is something people make millions and millions of dollars off of, and it, it could be argued, and you, even in the best of courts, you're going to win five times, you're going to lose five times out of ten. It's, you don't know that.
If that's the case, can we have Mike McCott? Like, who would we talk to, like, in that, say, to that logistics?
I mean, I, I already had attorney McNulty go through this. I mean, I wrote the RFP with him and the city solicitor and the mayor. So it was a joint effort in writing all of this to make sure we had the right language and everything was in the right place for what we were trying to do. So, you know, I don't, I'm not the attorney, so I'm not going to, I'm not going to say that, you know, the questions, but the RFP, at least purpose, and the lease that was attached, was reviewed by our legal counsel and the solicitor was involved as well. I mean, there's always going to be liability, so I, I mean, I totally understand that. You know, it's not going to be zero liability.
If I may...
They are certainly expected to have their own insurance and their own, you know, all of that, as they rent, that was something they had to provide for us.
And also...
They'll provide once they open.
For them to make these renovations, we have to make a commitment. They're not going to throw five hundred thousand dollars if we don't have a commitment. So they're willing, and Mike, I don't want to put words, but you, you would look into helping out, making the building ADH compliant, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that'd be free money. That's because they're giving it to us to make the building ADH compliant. You would then work on with free money, because it is free money, to help do all the asbestos, the paint, whatever it needs to be done to make that building safe.
Absolutely, to make the building safe and to get up the code, because we know we need to add new bathrooms, stuff like that as well. So that money...
So the only thing, be, and again, Mike, because we're concerned about the roof, and if you were here last night, roofs are the biggest thing right now. Would you guys, whatever left over, because you're going to do the inside, would go towards the structural too, like a roof, et cetera, if you needed to? Or would you have to re, that would have to be back on us?
I mean, we look at it, the way we've looked at it is it's a shared cost. We all are going to coexist under the same roof. All the programs, all the departments, they're sharing that building. So we are open to sharing the cost of the roof.
So they're willing to, again, Mike, I'm, I'm just, tell me I'm not making these words into your mouth. You're willing to look at the cost of the roof, and whatever the city or whatever that other side has to happen, you're willing to put up or raise money or work at things to help out to get that roof up to par?
Correct.
It's a shared, yeah, so it's a shared cost, right? So the whole point is that...
I want everybody on this committee to understand, they're giving us money to help as long as we're making commitments to them. That's, that's, that's what I'm saying. And they are, that's what he just said. I heard him, that's what he said, and the public now has heard it. But if he, we don't make the commitment, none, none of that stuff is going to happen, because it's coming out of our pocket, and we don't have the money to do that. So that's what I'm saying, that, that is what I'm saying.
Member Shabilia?
Member DeZoglio has spent the last six months of my tenure here on the school committee advising us that free cash is not free. The money that they are putting forward is not their money. It is money that Auditor DeZoglio, in her capacity as a state representative, has generated through earmarks and other donations and put into a fund to do this. It is not free cash. It is not, it is free cash the same way our free cash is free cash. That's the reality. And not to take that away from Mike and his team, because again, I have full faith that they can do this. I just have operational questions that are not going to be answered in day one of us seeing an RFP. And I, I think that that's a fair assessment. We do RFPs, I do them all the time. You don't make a decision in a thirty-minute meeting. It never happens, and I fully understand and respect that this has been going on since Larry Giadano sat at the table forty years ago. Not trying to stop that, but to sit there and say that this is free money, then I, I, I want to know where that printing press is that they're giving this away, because it's about as free money as our free cash. And you of all people have spent the last six months telling me free cash is not free.
All right, member Donovan?
Okay, I, I have a once question and a suggestion. So do you have to worry about the neighbors? Do, do you have to notify them because of the change in the building or the additional use? Because there are some residents who live around there.
Uh, I don't know.
Okay, so that's one question. You know, obviously, we all want to be good neighbors. So given, I think we can agree, we all want to see this, we all want to see a place in Methuen where people, our kids can get together and grow and feel safe. Okay. So, and there seems to be some very valid questions, like what's the shared cost? What do we have to do about, do we have to be worried about the neighbors? Member Shabilia, you have a lot of questions. Can we commit to put this on our agenda for August and make a decision, one way or the other, and then everyone will feel good about things? Is it possible to get these questions? I don't even know what the questions are, Dan, so...
I mean, you'd have, we'd have to table it till August 12th.
Yeah, but... I mean, if...
Unless you, I, you know, unless, we could have another meeting in July, a special meeting, or, you know, it's not an emergency meeting, because I'd post it, but you could have a special Zoom meeting, or we could agree to come back, it's just...
I, I would just feel better if, like, okay, we had, we, I don't want it hanging out there and to know if we could get a definitive date, so everyone feels comfortable, because this is our building, it's a beautiful building. We want to make sure we do the right thing. And I get the value of, hey, someone's going to come to my house and fix things that we don't have to pay for. And we don't, so I, I just don't see us going anywhere right now.
So for me, and probably for Michael, the, the most important part is, I need very specific questions then to share with him of what it is that you're looking for, so that if we come back, I can invite Michael back and share the information that you're looking for specifically. But I, but I want to caution us a little bit, because we're not in the business of running a youth center. This is about the building and us feeling good about the space being used this way. That's what, it was the use of the space, the purpose of it, are we comfortable with that, right? Not, I get everybody wants to know about the programming and have a say in what they think it should look like, but, you know, it'll be for youth of Methuen. There is a description, if you want more of that, if that's going to be a deciding factor, I'm not sure how much more they're going to be able to give us in four weeks without hiring, right? They, they're not going to commit to anything and hire staff until they have an, an actual commitment to an infrastructure, an actual building, where now they can start releasing those funds. So I think there's things that he can bring us back for the information that we've talked about here, and there's things that I just, I just don't know, and I'm not the one doing it, and Michael's still here. If, you know, how detailed are we going to get? Because they're not going to have the conversations with the kids by then, somebody hired for programming, right? Everybody knows what the idea is going to be, they have some of the supplies they want to use, but I, I don't, and I don't want to put words in his mouth, because he's here, but... That's what I would ask for, is just like specific things that you want me to follow up with, that I can send to Susan and Michael and say, can you get this information to us by a certain date to make sure you guys all have those concrete questions asked? The neighbors, the liability, I can ask our attorneys a little bit more about the liability to this, like what, what have they experienced, right? Like, that's, even if it's anecdotal, what has they experienced and can share that with us? Those things are a little more concrete for me.
So, two questions. Who would be signing the, the, the contract? Is that us, or is that you, the mayor, Maggie? How does that work?
It's the city, because it's a lease.
Because it's a city building?
Correct.
Okay.
And it's long-term. To anything that puts us in potential debt long-term...
Right.
Is the city. That's how I understand it. I could check, I could, that could be something concrete I can make sure of, but I'm pretty sure...
It aligns with my, with my expectations.
Which is why the city solicitor had a very keen eye on the lease part of the RFP, as it was written, to make sure that it was in good standing. But yes, I can... Liability questions, I mean, you guys can send me some information, that would be helpful, so we can continue to move on.
Oh, sorry, I forgot my second question. If the vote tonight was purely, do we all agree that this space should be held for a, a youth center? I, I mean, I'm a hard yes on that one, ten out of ten days. The, the RFP response, you know, I, I, again, I think it portrays the group wonderfully. I think that they have the understanding that, you know, what needs to be done, how to do it. And I mean, even looking at the resumes, we loved, imagine that in Lowell, not Lowell Lawrence, when my kids were little, like, I know they can structure an environment that's going to be conducive. It's just, I, I would be concerned about when it gets to contracting, how that looks. And if someone can give me some assurance that when it does come to the contracting, that at least the school committee will be consulted?
What do you mean by contracting?
I have, like I said, it's, when it, we're going to do a lease for the space, and it's probably going to be a boilerplate commercial tenant lease.
It was already written in the RFP.
Yeah.
Yep.
I just, it's a government template. There are no SLAs in there, service level agreements, for what the city expects a vendor to live up to. There is no contract performance indicators of what, how we're going to measure the success to say if a group is actually doing what we expect them to do. And that's, those are not typically things that a governmental entity includes in contracts. The rest of the world does, but government doesn't. And it's just something I would like to see in, in a contracting phase, because in my mind, I get that it's space, we're talking about space. But we're not just talking about space, we're talking about a partner that's going to come in and facilitate stuff for the city, because we're subbing out something that we, we technically could, if we had, you know, the, the people and the money, do on our own, but we don't. So now we have a vendor coming in to do that, and we should be able to set those expectations clearly in, in writing with Michael and team to, to kind of benchmark that for a long and ninety-nine-year relationship, which I hope it is, but on the best terms for both parties. So that's...
So I, yep, I know what you're saying. I can ask if there's any such relationship between the YMCA and the city? Something of that nature that was written? Programming, you know, I know what you're saying, programming-wise, that how are we meeting success? And are we going to maintain this?
Member Willett?
Thank you, and like I go back to my previous reservation about lowballing the number of one hundred clients. I would be adamant about the removal of that language. Not to set necessarily a max number, but to remove a lowballed number and to allow an alignment with the capacity limit of the building, something that you envision a full-capacity usage of the building. Um, something that you envision a full-capacity usage of the building. Um, I would really encourage both the survey, um, and movement on that front. And I would also be very leery of just limiting it to 100 clients because the demand is gonna greatly exceed that initial number. And I think to reflect what Member Chavilla has indicated, uh, Susan has done tremendous work with Imagine That and Little Sprouts. And she has decades of service in making organizations profitable and successful and enticing to families and their children. I believe they can start from day one in terms of promotion and advertising and outreach. And I wanna make sure too that we're providing some sort of, uh, information about transportation to that facility for families that do not necessarily have access to transportation. Um, so those would be, my concerns is that A, we do a survey to gauge the populace and the interests overall. B, to remove the language of the 100 minimum. Um, and just, we're gonna be constrained by that. I don't think that's fair if we have an overabundance of outreach and interests. And then also, uh, making sure that we have some type of provision or discussion about how they're transporting these children from different, uh, locations in Methuen. I know, uh, some of the kids will be in walking distance, and that's why, um, centralized in downtown Methuen is advantageous. But you might have low-income families outside of the immediate walking distance. And we don't have, uh, school buses, how they will handle that situation. So those would be my three concerns that could be brought up at a future meeting. Thank you.
So I just wanna say something that our purview is literally, are we going to allow this space to be used for a youth center? Our purview is not the number of students, our purview is not the programming, none of that is our purview. The busing is not our purview. So I, I'm not sure that we can ask for those type of questions because it's not our purview. Our purview is literally just, are we willing to let this space be used for this youth center with this particular organization? So I, I'm, I appreciate all of the concerns, but-
Yeah, again, respectfully, that's one interpretation. And I'm an elected school committee member working with the voting population. I will not be answering those calls if we're pigeonholing ourselves in terms of just 100 clients during that first year, if there's a huge demand out there. I will not be privy to that. And if that will be reflected in my vote, and I have conditions on my vote, and those are my conditions. And I have no problem with that. Thank you.
Table, somebody, somebody should just motion to table at this point? And then if there's other things that you guys wanna send me to ask, I will send those to Michael.
I will motion to table.
Second.
Roll call, please, Martha.
Yes, yes.
Ryan DeZoglio?
Yes.
Mary Beth Donovan?
Yes.
Lori Keegan?
No.
Kristin Maxwell?
Yes.
Daniel Chavilla?
Yes.
Kenneth Willett?
Yes.
Any votes, Harry? Two, three, five yes, one no, passes. Okay.
Dr. Quong, I will have my list of questions to you tomorrow.
I think I captured some of them, but if you could send those up.
Yeah, I've got a list of ones I didn't ask.
I have some notes as well, but I wanna make sure I capture everything, so please.
Yep, I'll send everything to you, Michael, that comes my way, okay?
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you for joining tonight.
No problem.
Thank you.
The school committee ratified the Methuen Cafeteria Employees Association Group A Contract in Executive Session. The school committee ratified the Methuen Cafeteria's Employees Association Group B Contract in Executive Session. The school committee ratified the Massachusetts Nurses Association Contract in Executive Session. The school committee ratified the Methuen Educational Secretaries Association Contract in Executive Session. Does the committee have any questions on the expenditure report?
Can I just speak briefly? Uh, we are coming up on the end of the fiscal year very quickly. Our last payroll hits Thursday. Um, a lot of moving parts, closing POs. Um, I do wanna let you know that, as you see, there's a, um, an ask for omnibus to be able to transfer funds. My goal will be to save as much money as possible, leaving it in the circuit breaker account for special ed, uh, tuitions, um, and using it for next year's. Uh, we did plan on that during budgetary times, so I just wanted to make you aware of that.
All right, may I have a motion and a second to approve the authority to transfer funds in order to close out FY '24?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Member Chavilla, second by Member DeZoglio, discussion? As previously in the past, um, we typically get an email with everything that you've done.
Yep.
Correct.
So I would just appreciate that to continue.
That'll be the same. I, uh, my real goal is to get it to you by July 12th. Um, but I did put the 19th on the memo just to give me a little time. I do have to have everything buttoned up around the 15th, so, yeah. But you'll definitely be notified as will, um, the CFO.
Perfect, thank you. Roll call vote, please, Martha. Ryan DeZoglio?
Yes.
Mary Beth Donovan?
Yes.
Lori Keegan?
Yes.
Kristin Maxwell?
No.
Daniel Chavilla?
Yes.
Kenneth Willett?
Yes.
Passes five yes, one no. Does the committee have any questions on the revolving funds report? May I have a motion and a second to approve the ice rink rates?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Member DeZoglio, second by Member Donovan? Oh, sorry, Member Chavilla. Discussion?
I just wanna commend, uh, Mr. Gosling over there. I agree with giving our hometown organizations a break. I think it sends the right message, so, uh, I'm a fan.
I will tell you, it was probably about six years ago, we bought a Zamboni. I mean, we didn't have the funds within the revolving account. Uh, we had to put down about $50,000 upfront, which Methuen youth hockey did for us. Um, we've been paying them off at $20 an hour of their use since then, and that's about to come to an end. And that's really why I kinda wanna keep their, their price level so they don't get that bump, a double bump kinda. So they've been good to us, I, I think it's, it's fair to be good to them.
Maybe have a conversation with Treasurer Jalbert about the, uh, the boards that they're talking about wanting.
Um, answer, let you know about the boards, um, we are getting quotes to see exactly what that costs. We have received one, it's between $280 and $290 to replace the boards. So we are looking at what that looks like. Do we need to do the whole thing? Do we just do all the glass? Do we, you know, are there certain areas that are unsafe that need to be addressed immediately? So we are, we're out looking at that to see the best way to address that. But if we had to, we can't bite off that whole chunk at once, so.
All right, roll call, please, Martha. Ryan DeZoglio?
Yes.
Mary Beth Donovan?
Yes.
Lori Keegan?
Yes.
Kristin Maxwell?
Yes.
Daniel Chavilla?
Yes.
Kenneth Willett? Kenneth Willett?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Excuse me, Madam Vice Chair, one quick question to Mr. Gosling. Are we running the ice rink through the summer?
The ice rink is closed this summer because people can't get to it.
Oh, okay.
That's the only reason. Once, um, what, the ice is, is still there. Once there's access or it's, um, feasible to get there, we'll open it up again, but we're not expecting that until the end of August.
Thank you.
Are the, does the committee have any questions on the grants report? Does this committee have any questions on the student activities accounts? Does the committee have any questions on food services report? Um, Member Chavilla, do you have an update on the policy subcommittee?
Uh, Policy Subcommittee met, oh, time is, time is a funny thing, a week ago? Week ago with, um, Ms. Bozak, uh, to discuss the bullying policy. Those notes are reflected in the meeting minutes that were approved last night earlier in this agenda. Uh, hopefully, there will be a draft circulating over the next couple of days slash week or two. Uh, back from Ms. Bozak for us to review. Uh, once we have a, what we deem a final product, it'll come back to the body as a whole for review. That's, that's what I've got thus far. Actually, I, I do have a question from the Policy Subcommittee. Actually, that was Transportation Subcommittee, never mind. I wanted to ask you about the, the bus guy, but that's, that's a different, different Subcommittee.
It's unfortunately not on the agenda.
I do have a question for the Policy Subcommittee.
Yes.
Did you guys wanna talk to the school committee about going to the MASC?
It's on the agenda, Ian.
May I have a motion and a second to, may I have a motion and a second to approve the MASC policy review man, manual development proposal?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Member Chavilla, second by Member Donovan.
I will give a little bit of background on it, uh, Vice Chair Keegan. Um, MASC, Massachusetts Association of School Committees, does a, offers a service that they will come in and review all of our policies against what they deem as most current, up-to-date best practice. They will take our policies one by one, review them and return them to us for review and approval for updating. Uh, I think, given Dr. Quong's earlier mention that some of these things have been here longer than she has, uh, this is going to be, uh, three grand, it's, it's, it's $9,000, three grand in one fiscal year, three grand in the next, three grand in the next, where it is going to be a very useful endeavor. This is something that would take the Policy Sub, Policy Subcommittee the next 45 years to complete. These guys are gonna do it in three and it's going to be, uh, top-notch. And luckily, they do have a sole source letter, so we didn't have to put this out to RFP. So that is always a saving grace.
Member DeZoglio.
So, I was reading this, so where would this money come from?
We, we have the money for consultants, et cetera, out of the business office. So $3,500 is, it's a good deal. It's a good deal.
Any other discussion? All right, roll call, Martha, please. Ryan DeZoglio?
Yes.
Mary Beth Donovan?
Yes.
Lori Keegan?
Yes.
Kristin Maxwell? Kristin Maxwell?
Yes.
Thank you. Daniel Chavilla?
Yes.
Kenneth Willett?
Yes.
Unanimous. Member Chavilla, will you please start the discussion on the Audit Subcommittee update?
So there, this, this was a little bit misconstrued, um, but I found a way to make it useful. Uh, in the Mayor's absence today, I did speak with, uh, Lori Antonucci, the city's purchasing agent, this morning. Um, unfortunately, despite there being a total of 17 pulls of the audit from the city website, one of which was me, uh, two of which were another city member, five of which were from the same vendor. The rest were which, what you would call forwarders. They're companies that pull these things down and send them out to a bunch of different companies because they're looking for this company to win the bid and they're gonna take their vig. Um, unfortunately, there were no responses, there were no questions from any, uh, direct bidding party. Uh, there were, there was an email that Ms. Antonucci sent out to those folks that she could capture information for from the tool, asking, you know, for some feedback. What stopped you from responding? What, what was the feedback you received? Uh, my feedback, and, uh, it was a part of the conversation at the first bet. This RFP was written in a way where it was, it was really good for what it was. However, it was a monster. It was asking a lot of one organization at one time. My recommendation to both Councilor Ferretta this morning in conversation and with the city purchasing agent was if this is something they wanna continue to do, I am one vote and one voice, but I still support it. But I think we need to build the puzzle one piece at a time, if that's what they wanna do, because you're not gonna find one organization to do it. Uh, my opinion that I, I have not yet shared with them is I think that it needs to be put out by the school's purchasing department, presenting it as a city RFP for a school presents as a, uh, fractured, uh, entity and a hostile kind of environment. And I think a lot of vendors may see that and shy away. So unfortunately, there were no respondents there. It, it is not dead. Uh, Council, Council of Ferretta has, uh, made it, uh, very clear that he intends to continue to pursue the audit. And I told him I, for one, support that. Uh, I don't think the school committee or Dr. Quong is gonna shy away from anybody wanting to look under the hood. So that's the update I have at this point.
Are there any questions? With no further business to discuss, may I have a motion and a second to adjourn the business workshop session of June 24th, 2024?
So moved.
I just wanna make sure she gets the date right. Is, is she right because we started at the 24th?
It's the 25th, I apologize. It's, you're, because we're looking at yesterday's.
Right, but isn't it, isn't this the meeting? It is yesterday's meeting.
Why don't we just say both dates?
It's continued from the 24th, but the meeting is posted as of today's date.
Okay.
Thank you.
So with no further business to discuss, may I have a motion and a second to adjourn the business workshop session of June 25th, 2024?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Member DeZoglio, second by Member Chavilla. Roll call, please. Ryan DeZoglio?
Yes.
Mary Beth Donovan?
Yes.
Lori Keegan?
Yes.
Kristin Maxwell?
Yes.
Daniel Chavilla?
Yes.
Kenneth Willett?
Yes.
Unanimous. Meeting is adjourned at 7:27.
Unite Methuen.